All right, good evening. Time is five P M. It's October twentieth two thousand twenty five. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Argyle I S D Board of Trustees. This time we will determine if a quorum is present.
Leona Mc Daye, present.
Josh Western, present.
Rich McDowell, present.
Matt Slaton, present.
Craig Oxford, present.
And I Sam Slaton, present. We do have a quorum established. So under the authority of the Texas Government Code five five one subchapter D, the board will now go into closed session at five oh one P M. To discuss Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four, personnel matters and public officers. Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven one, consultation with attorney. Texas Government Code five five one dot oh eight two, student and employee disciplinary matter complaint. Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property. And Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven six, deliberation regarding physical safety and security. (clap)
You
All right, good evening. Time is 6:01 PM. We have returned from executive session. At this time, we will do the pledges with our friends from the sixth grade center.
Hi everyone, we're so excited to be here. I'm the proud principal of the sixth grade center and these are my awesome peeps that hang out with me every day.
Hello everyone, my name is Kellen Avery and what I like about SGC is that we get to have outdoor advisory and we have awesome teachers that care about us.
Good evening.
My name is Christian Bearfield. I am a student at the sixth grade center and new to the district. What I love most about the sixth grade center is that it has given me the time and opportunity to adjust from a kid to a preteen. I also like having separate classes for each subject and the choice to choose my electives and how we get to meet new friends. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Emma Kate Miranda and I love the caring and kindness that the teachers, students, and staff show to everyone. They're so welcoming and enthusiastic about sixth grade.
Hello, my name is Carter Ford. My favorite thing about SGC is how they brought all the schools together and can still maintain authority.
Okay, I like that. That is a good one.
My favorite thing about SGC is the very kind teachers and staff. They're very kind, loving, and always greet us inside the school. And I absolutely love the principal and assistant principal, counselor, and nurse.
Tell us your name sweetheart, I think I missed your name. Will you tell us your name?
My name is Taylor Coon.
Thank you, Taylor.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Javed and one thing I love about SGC is how kind all our peers are to each other.
Hi, my name is Anika and one thing I love about SGC are the principal and vice principal. They're really fun and I also like my teachers and friends.
Hello, my name's Emma Westerman. My favorite thing about SGC is my evil time teacher and he helps me learn the science.
Hello, my name is Ryan Andreas and my favorite thing about the sixth grade center is having electives and I chose theater and art.
My name is Yoga Shrean. I'm a sixth grade center at SGC. One of the things I appreciate most about SGC is the supportive environment created by our teachers and staff. They inspire us to work hard, be kind, and believe in ourselves. I also enjoy our school spirit weeks and school events that bring students and teachers together. I am very proud to be a part of a school that values learning, teamwork, and respect.
Thank y'all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to these Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Great job. Hold on, we're gonna come take a picture. Stay there.
Thank you again to sixth grade center, Mr. Hawksworth if you'd like to lead us in our opening prayer, please.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to pour into these children and the administrators, the ability to lead this district in a way that honors you. Please help us all to understand that, that we're here for the kids and that we love you, Lord, amen.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve items discussed and amended during closed session. Mr. Hawksworth motion to approve, a second?
Second.
Dr. Leonie McDade with second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment this evening, so we will move on to some recognitions.
That's right, so we have tonight Argyle Education Foundation. So come on up here, Ms. Hannah, and share with us some really good news. I think you have to share.
Yes, I do.
Hannah Robinson.
My name's Hannah Robinson. I'm the president of the Argyle Education Foundation and I'm here with part of my board of directors tonight to share what we did last year. As everyone knows, our mission and purpose is to support Argyle ISD and all of the education efforts here. Of course, we work on having perpetual source of funds to maintain and provide funds for programs and activities to support the education at Argyle ISD. We were established in 2003 and so we've had over 20 years working with Argyle ISD. And since its inception, we've been able to donate over $2.3 million towards teacher innovation, programming, grants, scholarships, dev funding, and other recognition programs. This is our current board and then our non-voting members, here we are. This is our current board, and then our non-voting members. Here we have Dr. Jordan working with us, which we're very grateful for her support and insight to us and just thankful for everybody who volunteers their time with us. Our investment, so we are funded by endowments that we have. We have a general endowment, Liza M Z endowment, a Cantrell, and CoServe. And those are what we pull from for program, teacher grants, scholarships, things of that nature. Like this year for twenty twenty five Teacher of the Year, we partnered with the district and it was funded by the Liza M Z Teacher Excellence Endowment. And we provided cash prizes for each campus winner as well as an additional cash prize for the overall winners. We also have our scholarship awards. So our CoServe scholarship went to Pascal Omatayo. And then our Cantrell Health Science Scholarship went to Bella Jeffries. And then our Rudy Men Community Service Scholarship went to Bella Jeffries as well. And then we were also to get, able to give two thousand dollars of gift cards to the staff at the end of year luncheon. So this, this past year was a really big year for us. We raised over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at our gala, which allowed us to jumpstart our new mission, which is to fund teacher bonuses. We were very thankful for all the community support, the administration support, the teachers. It was just a really, really awesome year to see everybody jump in and donate and volunteer their time to meet those goals. Okay, so what's next? We're still going on with our teacher bonuses, looking to work with businesses in the area, individuals. And we're gonna have a really big gala this April twenty fifth, twenty twenty six, and we'll be announcing the location soon. Okay, we're gonna be one of the first events at Marty B's Reserve, so we're really, really excited. He's been amazing working with us and really supporting our mission, so we're really excited. We're gonna get those sponsorships out soon for everybody to jump in. It's gonna be a good one. We're also gonna be doing a car raffle, so we'll start selling tickets for that soon. We'll continue working with the district to hit goals and support them. And of course, we're always looking for new endowments and funding those endowments to, you know, grow our programs and scholarships. So yeah, that's what we've got on the docket for this year. And of course, please go like our Facebook page, Instagram, save our website address. You can donate online. And again, like I said, we'll start having, you'll start seeing those gala announcements and ticket sales for raffle as well. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The monies. Okay, yes, we're able to, we'll be donating a hundred and forty two thousand eight hundred dollars towards teacher bonuses.
All right, Dr. Carpenter?
It's, all right, Texas Education Human Resources Recognition. So October eighth, every year, or not every year, but October eighth this year was the Texas Education Human Resources Day that Governor Abbott has had a proclamation for, and so we want to take just a few minutes this evening to recognize our human resources department. They are small but mighty with over seven hundred employees in the district, and so they're in charge of a lot of different things. There they are. That's what a great picture. That's a great picture, yeah, that's awesome. And just a few things, an integral part of the success of our schools is our H R department. These professionals play a critical role in our system, and they're particularly important in education because they're skilled and efficient in the talent acquisition and retention. So we have to recruit, but then the onboarding process, if, you know, in the summertime, there are people in and out of this building all summer and they do a great job of onboarding our staff. And then through suborientations and training, so there are a lot of times the first faces our employees see as they're coming on board, and so we appreciate that department in serving our staff services. But at this time, we just encourage all Texans to recognize the importance of our human resources department in education. And I would like to personally, on behalf of the district and the board, recognize Dr. Chris Daniel, our deputy superintendent who leads our staff service department. So Dr. Daniel, if you could please come up. We're gonna take a picture, come on up. And then he has an incredible team working with him. Jessica Mayer, administrative assistant, come on up, Jessica. Oh, she's not here. Okay, all right, Tori Kendrick, our benefits and leave specialist, come on up, Tori. We have Serena Hendricks, our H R specialist. And our sweet smiling face and sweet hello when answering the phone out front, district receptionist Becca Lightner, and our sub-coordinator. So thank you to this team for all that they do for our H R department and district. All right, our second recognition, October is National Principal, School Principals Month. They get a whole month, right? That's what we give y'all, a whole month. You should have a whole year, right? Our principals are amazing. And so again, we recognize in Texas in October, you know, our system, education system depends on the leadership of very, very capable principals and they do an incredible job on our campus. Their schoolwork is tirelessly and it happens twenty-four seven job, and so we are very, very, very grateful for everything that they do as they lead our teachers, our staff, and our students, and our families. Again, October is set aside to honor their hard work and dedicated service, but I have a few things I want to say about each one of them individually. So as I call them up, they get to come up here and stand awkwardly in front of everybody. And our Vanna White, Dr. Jordan, is going to shower you with a little token of our appreciation. So I'm gonna start today with at Jane Rusman Elementary. Principal Lauren Tullis faced the incredible challenge of opening a new campus amid unprecedented growth last year and did so with grace, energy, and excellence. She's built an amazing culture in a short amount of time centered on connection and belonging. So thank you, Ms. Lauren Tullis.
It's a necklace.
That's right, that's right. That's exactly what it is. That's exactly right. Secondly, when I recognize at South Elementary, Principal Kristen Haynes is a quiet and intentional leader whose thoughtful approach and steady presence bring calm and strength to her campus. She models excellence through servant leadership and a deep care for students and staff alike. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. At West Elementary, first year principal Katie Hayden has stepped into her new role with confidence, leading with a strong instructional focus, a big heart for kids, and a powerful voice advocacy at the state level. She embodies courage and compassion in her leadership. So thank you, Ms. Hayden. At Hilltop Elementary, we have Principal Holly Williams. Holly leads with heart and deep roots in the Argyle community, returning to the very campus where she once taught kindergarten through fourth grade. Her passion for students and her commitment to relationships in Argyle I S D make Hilltop a warm and nurturing place to learn. Thank you, Ms. Williams. At our sixth grade center, first year principal Heather Van Noy has fit right in with the fun and unique world of sixth graders. She's embraced the energy, the trends, and the excitement of this age group while continuing to elevate excellence in teaching and learning and somehow is managing the craze of six, seven. So congratulations to you and handling all of that. They're all watching, six, seven, there we go, they're watching. So congratulations and thank you, Ms. Van Noy. At Argyle Middle School, Principal Donna Lumpston brings creativity, positivity, and lots of fun with her enthusiasm in everything she does. She's always up for a theme, so if you go visit, you're gonna take a picture and you're going to have to be part of the theme. She's up for a challenge and always up for a fun surprise, creating a campus culture where learning is engaging and her students feel valued. So thank you, Ms. Lumpston. And at Argyle High School, Principal Shannon Knowles leads from the front, facing growth and change head-on with strength and determination. She continues to inspire excellence at every level and models what it means to be an Eagle every day. Thank you, Ms. Knowles. I think y'all will agree that they represent the heart of this district, and I know that you probably have a few words you would like to say to them, so as they stand here facing us, this is your chance. I know you have something to say.
I'll go first. I don't actually have, I'm speechless. You guys, some of you I've known for a long time, others not so long, but wow. When we get to go do the boardwalks that we just did, I get to see all of you. You got control of your campuses, you know what you're doing, you have a plan, you're delivering on that plan. It's a pretty cool thing to see. Makes our lives easier. So thank you very much.
I just echo what Mr. Hawksworth said, so it's, you know, quite unique when us as an individual or a board can just sing the praises of our, of our campus administrators and be able to go out and tell everyone that all the things that you all are implementing and doing and with enthusiasm and it, doing the boardwalks are just so rewarding, not that we could be on our feet longer than, you know, one day, like I go home and like I'm done. But it, but it truly is, you know, not just motivating but inspiring, everything that's going on at your campuses. And, you know, we're grateful for the countless hours above and beyond that, that y'all sacrificed to make this district what it is. And so truly the heartbeat of your campuses and it just spreads throughout, so it's easy to see. So thank you all, except for you, okay? You know, the, the test that you gave us is just unfair.
Oh, that was terrible. That was awful.
They're still complaining, they're still complaining.
It was shaming, no, but, but in all, in all seriousness, thank you all, I appreciate it.
I'll say this, when I think back about, you know, working with you guys over the last year, you know, I think about the budget workshops and the feedback that y'all gave and how you advocated for your campuses and what a great relationship that y'all have with your superintendent that you can speak with us directly about things that you need at different campuses. And, and, you know, so just what great advocates you guys are for what's going on at your campuses, where your needs are, and your willingness to share, you know, ideas with us on how we can improve things. And when you hear bad ideas from my fellow board members, you tell them that, you know, I appreciate you guys, you know, letting, pointing that out, because I try all the time and they don't listen to me, but I appreciate y'all doing that.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, I've sat in your seat, those of you that know me, and I know what you do every day. And what I love is your tirelessness, your commitment to your campuses, and the thing that I see when I go on your campuses is I see the culture. I see what you've nurtured, I see what you've grown on your campuses and how your staff interacts with one another. And I've always said, you can walk into a school building and it hits you right away. You know if you're in one of those buildings. And there's not a one of you here that I don't feel that with when I walk in your buildings. I appreciate everything that you do, the tirelessness, the hours, you know, it's a twenty-four seven job, no matter what anybody says, because your brain's always thinking, you always got something going on there. And I know I do appreciate you guys, and, you know, one month out of the year isn't, isn't enough to, to sing your praises, but I really do appreciate from my heart what you guys are doing. Thank you.
And I just, whether it's boardwalks or handing out candy at the high school on random Fridays, it's consistent across the board. I talk to parents and they love their campus leadership. And so I think parents are very lucky, the students are very lucky, administration's very lucky, and the board is very lucky to have you guys as leadership on the different campuses. And so I thank you. I know all the time and hard work you put into it, and it's a lot, but we are very grateful for you, and so thank you.
I just want to tell you, I love how each one of your campuses has your vibe, like each one of you have a different vibe. You can fill it in your campuses. Seeing the way that your staff interacts, like they were saying, is really awesome. But when you get out and talk to parents, and I've run into people at West, and they're like, we love this Hayden, and the people at Hilltop are so excited to have Holly back. And it's just really special, the way that each one of you kind of fit the personality of your students, and it's just really fun to see. So we appreciate you and thank you for all your hard work.
I'll just be simple. Thank you for the grace and love you show the kids every single day, because one boardwalk, I'm tired for two days. Love you guys and appreciate everything you do.
Thank y'all.
Sorry about Mr. West.
All right, donations. All right, October twenty twenty five donations from A B C, donation number thirty-one, four thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars and thirteen cents, boys' basketball apparel. A B C, donation number thirty-two, eighteen hundred ninety-seven dollars for girls' soccer V E O. A B C, donation number thirty-three, eleven hundred thirty-five dollars for tennis, tennis boards. A B C, donation number thirty-five, twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars, all sports overnight travel. Argyle South Elementary P T A, eight hundred dollars for lunches. J R E P T A, nine hundred dollars for Star Pep Rally Mavericks. J R E P T A, twenty-eight hundred dollars for Butterfly Project. J R E P T A, two hundred dollars, J R E Safety Patrol Appreciation Party. J R E P T A, two hundred dollars for Grinch Race Supplies. J R E P T A, three hundred dollars for Red Ribbon Week Supplies. J R E P T A, four hundred dollars for two lighted JRE PTA, $400 for two lighted stop signs for crossing guards. AEF, $142,800, funding commitment for 2025-2026. Total October donations, $179,307.13. So do you have any questions on any of the consent items? We're gonna entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rich McDowell with the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jeff.
All right, we're gonna do our October construction updates for you. First slide here, looking at the home side on the stadium project. On the foreground, the video board is ready for the LED panels to start going in, that's supposed to start tomorrow. The background, you can see the grandstands on this have gone up on one side, and there's one lone lift, you can see orange lift there, boom lift, up at the press box finishing up the metal panels. So once he's out of the way, they can go ahead and complete the structure of the grandstands, which of course they now have. And so those grandstands have been built all the way across, all the way to the top, and we should start seeing some seats going pretty soon. That will be very obvious because they're red seats, so you'll know it. Here's just another angle, you can see the lift better in this shot, finish up the metal panels on that front side, so the bleachers could go ahead and finish all the way across. And a little closer photo, on each end of the press box, we have stairs that will get you between all three levels. They don't take you down to the ground, so you see the yellow in there behind that metal grid, that'll all get wrapped with metal, and then there's a perforated metal that will go on that grid system to kind of hide the stairs, so they'll be enclosed, but not, you know, weather tight, just kind of disappear. Here's a shot looking straight on, or the press box, you can see stair towers on both ends here. Lift down lower, still working on some of the elements there to get out of the way for finishing those grandstands. This picture's one of the three concession stands, just a shot of the two serving windows here in this picture. They've got exterior lighting fixtures being installed, we've got our exterior water fountains installed, canopies are going on the buildings. In this shot, we're looking at the main entrance canopy outside of the press box, so they've got the brick up. They've got to finish the top of those columns, it gets a cast stone piece on top to close those off. In the background, you can't really see it here, but the mason is working to bring the brick up from the ground to the bottom of the press box, it's all brick, and then once you hit the press box, of course, it's all metal and lighter elements above, so we didn't have to find a way to support that weight. And they are working on metal panels on the backside, so they've made a lot of progress since this photo went in, so they're probably 80% complete with metal panels on the back of the press box at this time. This photo, you can see the indoor activity center progressing, they're still working to get complete here on the north side, I guess I would call that, so we can get that parking lot aisle open back up as soon as possible. All the masonry veneers finished around the building on all sides, and they're working on the exterior sheathing, and then that will also get a metal panel over it. The shots are inside of the indoor practice facility, so they're working on MEP overhead in here. They're framing walls out that will receive plywood, on the inside painted plywood, so everything will be protected from, you know, flying footballs, baseballs, golf balls, whatever. All overhead doors have been installed, you can see a few of those in this shot. And then of course here, in another six weeks or so, we should see green, have turf in there. On our look ahead, LED panels will be going on, video board, home grandstands and chairs on home side will be completing soon. Metal panels on the press box are getting real close to that. And then dry in on the indoor activity center, so that's just getting the rest of the metal panels on the outside, getting it ready for the turf on the inside. Are there any questions about either of those projects?
Is the time lapse camera still going?
Time lapse camera is still going.
Okay.
We should have one still on, we have one on the website, right? Yeah, so when all that's done, we're gonna get them to create time lapse for us.
Yeah.
So, and I think Go Vision is gonna do a time lapse of just the video board, I think, so, and we'll ask for that when they're complete. And the elevator's here, I know you haven't asked about it yet, but the elevator is here, they are installing it.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
I know. I know. It's called conditioning.
It's only took me nine years to get him to say it before.
Nine years.
He's been on here nine years.
He's gonna say, "I haven't been here nine years."
He's been trying, you're the only one that passed.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So now our middle school update. Start out with just kind of an overall shot from the north looking south. You see they've made a lot of progress on getting the periphery landscape in and done, so that will have a full growing season in before we open and go for our COs, so we should have a very well-established landscape. In the background here, they're still working on some of the sporting facilities, and we have some better shots here later, but still working on tennis courts, got a little bit of work left to do on our discus area and shot put. We've got pretty much all the structural steel up on the building, all the way around, still working on some detailed work, lentils, things of that nature on that. This shot's looking at the front, again, all the structural steel's up here, they're working on all the detailed steel. Masonry veneer is continuing on around, so they're following the steel erection, so they're coming around from the north side, so we'll see them kind of moving clockwise in this picture, moving around to the front to come back to the main entrance and finish that. This shot's looking, a little closer shot of a classroom wing. Here you can see they've got the rooftop curbs on the roof, that's what the units sit on. So they've got all of those in place and actually now have units sitting on them. You can also see the exterior sheathing and some of the drywall being stocked in the building, so they have been working on framing and sheathing and sheet rock in the building. This shot's where they have started on the north side, so the framing, metal stud framing, following structural steel framing, masonry veneers coming behind that. This is a shot looking at the main entrance of the building, so on the left is the administration area in this photo. This is an inside shot of that main corridor, so after you come in the main entrance, this is looking down, past the offices and goes on into the cafeteria and library areas and then a door out the back. This is a shot of the cafeteria space and library space, that wall hasn't been built to separate the two, so on the left would be the library, and the rest of the photo on the right, that's gonna be our cafeteria and stage in the background where you see the lift here. It will be elevated, but that slab will still be poured above that slab, so you can't picture that right now, but we will have an elevated platform in there for performances. This is a picture inside the storm shelter gymnasium, they've just stored their duck work in here, a lot of that is now in the air, and we should be getting ready to start doing the block fill and paint in these spaces in the next few weeks. Another overall shot looking from the south, so this is the one where you can see a little bit better what they're still working on on our sports facilities, so tennis courts, they've now got all the lights stood, you can see fence posts in this photo. Right in front of that is where we've got our two discus pads, and then we're gonna pour a concrete border, and then we'll get some granite infill for the actual shot put sector itself. There's tennis courts with the lights installed. This picture is the concession stand over by the football field and track, so they have topped those walls out and got the roof on that at this point, and they'll be working on veneer very soon on that. Look ahead here, rooftop unit install, that was done about a week and a half ago with a helicopter, same day they did the units here with the helicopter at high school, and then went over to middle school and set all of those units in a day. I don't know the number, it's gotta be around 100 units or so total. We'll see them complete the exterior framing and interior framing in our classroom wings over the next few weeks, starting our interior finishes over in the gym and fine arts area, that'll be our block filler and our base coats of paint. Still working on our permanent power connections for the building, so we can get some heat at this point. I don't think we're gonna need air much anymore until next year, and then our bleachers should be going in at the football field soon, bleacher and press box. Are there any questions on the middle school? And the elevator's not here yet on that one.
That was from Mr. Hawksworth.
I was as curious as who was gonna ask.
I trust you, Jeff.
We got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
It is your turn.
You want me to use a clicker or you want to? Okay, we're gonna go through the superintendent's report, have several pictures here on this first slide that represent kind of where we are from a celebration standpoint, so we're gonna talk through a little bit of this. As you can hear the band out here right now, we'll talk about them in just a minute, but we've had a lot of things going on the first quarter, we've had our team tennis, they were the 5A Region 1 Regional semifinalists, very proud of the team. They finished up last Thursday, I believe, in Wichita Falls, as they were competing against Abilene Wiley. Abilene Wiley ended up advancing during that match, but had an incredible season and they're gearing up now for spring tennis, so good news is we get them back in the spring. Cross country, we had boys and girls, both advanced to regionals, and they ran this morning in Lubbock. So it's been a long drive out there and they ran and coming home, they fell short of advancing to state, but represented us very well, and so we did not have both teams advance last year, and so we're very, very proud of them for doing that. Football won an exciting game Friday night against Mansfield Summit, that puts us at 5-0 in district, 6-1 on the year, ranked number three in 5A D2, and that puts us sitting top of the district, leading the district at this point in the season. Volleyball is 31-3, that's a pretty good record there, ranked number six in 5A, and volleyball will begin their playoffs next Tuesday, so it's already, or actually Thursday, Thursday, the 30th, so they're already in playoffs, ready for postseason. Boys golf placed third in the Glen Rose Invitational and the Grandberry Invitational recently. And then our band competed this past Saturday in the UIL Region 2 marching contest and have now advanced to Area B marching contest, which if you don't know, they practice all the time, they're incredible out here, and so they were practicing last week during fall break and they were ready to go on Saturday, so very proud of our band. And then we also had an event back in September, Hats for Halverson. Chief Davis kind of led this event with our communications department and to honor Fort Worth Fireman Caleb Halverson, who is an Argyle High School graduate, he was severely injured in a fire back in Sept-, early September, garage collapsed, and spent a lot of days and nights in critical condition, also in the burn unit, and at the same time had a brand new baby in the NICU, and so the family faced a lot of challenges and still continues to face some challenges, but that one day in Argyle ISD, for Hats for Halverson, our students raised over $7,600 for the family. So thank you to our families for showing up big for the Halverson family, and once an Eagle, always an Eagle, so we're proud to support them and glad to know that Caleb and the baby, I think, are now home and so working on recovering from those. And then we had our first soaring star winner, we got to go celebrate Stephanie Wilkinson, she is our bright and shiny face in the front office at the sixth grade center, and that was a big surprise for her. She doesn't lack a lot of credit, but we celebrated big and all she was worried about was she should be running the social media, and we're like, "No, this is about you," so she thought she was supposed to be taking pictures, and we said, "No, it's about you." So we had to celebrate Stephanie and very excited to do so. And then a new recognition we have this year, Mr. Heron recognized some things regarding some students, and so we have the High Flowers recognition, and it really started organically, we were at the, I guess it was the parade, the carnival, the carnival after the homecoming carnival, it was late that night, everyone knows, everybody was exhausted, a lot of cleanup, and there's not very many people left to help clean up, and so Mr. Heron's out there with a few people, and he looks up and we have three students that are middle school students that are siblings and on their own. Just nobody had told them to do it, they just stayed behind and started cleaning, and it's those kinds of things that, you know, just organically see the students in our district, so congratulations to Kayden Cassidy and Carter Hughes, some siblings over at the middle school, we recognize them, I think they were very surprised and excited about that, so it was just a random act of kindness and modeling what it is to be an Eagle, so wanna appreciate that, celebrate them. And then we have some just regular district updates from an attendance and enrollment standpoint, excuse me, enrollment standpoint. We were at 6552 today, so we're just 32 students off of the demographers projection, which is technically set for next Friday, the 31st, so there you can see our actuals as of today on each of our campuses, and then you can also see our class size ratios, which continue to remain in a really good place right now, considering where we were last year. And I know, again, I always like to make sure everybody recognizes that this board elected to approve 50 new teaching positions, new to the budget, to help, because our teachers wanted, and our parents as well, wanted smaller class sizes, and we have filled our elementary classrooms with teachers to get those size, those class sizes down, and as we continue to grow, they will creep up as we have all of our classrooms full, but right now, those are in really good shape and you can just feel it. I know y'all talked about being on boardwalks, those of you that have already been, and y'all have commented just being in classrooms and feeling that in the classroom, so I'm gonna continue to update our families and our annual, monthly on those. And then just from some district and community updates, we have scheduled an East Middle School, High School Attendance Zone meeting next Wednesday, which is the 29th, I know the original email said Wednesday, the 28th, but it is Wednesday, the 29th. And that'll be, that'll go out again tomorrow, I believe, that's for anybody's zone to the east side in the, in that middle school, high school attendance zone, we have several things we're gonna cover, some things are, you know, pretty set, some things are not yet, and we're gonna have to wait on the fall demographer and spring demographer report to make some final decisions on the 27th school year, because you've got some options there with the sophomores and the juniors, and we wanna do what's best for kids, but we also have the sixth graders coming over as well, so we're working on, we'll go through and explain all of that that evening. Then we have multicultural night, which is a huge event, and I know Ms. Van Noy has been involved in that a lot over the last several years, and that's a big event November 12th. This year it's at the middle school, not at the high school, it's gonna be at the middle school from 6:00 to 7:30. We also have a new podcast, Capital in the Classroom, dropping soon, we have Ms. Hayden, who you saw here a little bit ago, we also have Maddie Fairchild, who's a teacher at South, and Mr. Oralowski, and they got to do a podcast with some students to highlight how the cell phone bill has impacted their classroom experience, and so I think, I'm not sure, when's the date dropping on that, do you know? Okay, they were reviewing it and doing some things, but very excited for that, because it's been a nice little podcast for us. And the naming nomination for new schools remains open through November 7th, so if you haven't and you're interested, that forum remains open, the Mascot and Colors submission forum for the second high school closed October 3rd, we had 561 submissions, and so we're sifting through that now, the transition team, I think they have a meeting tomorrow in fact, and they'll be working with that and then going back to the students and then bringing some recommendations to the board. So November, you'll be seeing naming of school recommendations, information only, Mascot and Colors, information only, and then December, we have a big meeting, because you've got some decisions to make, consider making some decisions. We will also have the fall demographer report, and we will also have the recommendation for a new middle school principal, as the new middle school principal will be opening. Facebook transition team updates continue, and then we have a special ed parent training coming up, understanding the IEP and the ARD process, there's a lot of acronyms in that world, and so Ms. Funderberg, her new leadership and the team is beginning to do some parent meetings, and so we're excited about that. And then finally, Parent Square is our, we launched this year as far as a communication tool with parents, wanted to let you know, we have 94% of our parents receiving emails through Parent Square, and 64% have downloaded and are using the app, so those are really good return rates on parents connecting with Parent Square, and then each week we get a top authors, a top post-authors from our campuses. And then each week, we get a top authors, a top post-authors from our campuses. And those five teachers happen to have the highest engagement with posts inside of Parent Square last week. So, that's kind of a neat thing, just to celebrate those that are in there and using it and getting familiar with it. And then I received an email last week from Ms. Casey Tidwell, she's the president of the South PTA. They were recognized as the highest growth percentage of membership year over year in the entire state. So, they're at almost seven hundred members at South, and we will be recognizing Ms. Tidwell and her board at the November board meeting. So, very excited there. Like, that's it.
Can you go back to the enrollment?
You bet.
For that school, it's like... So, seven hundred parents are enrolled out of seven hundred eighty-three students?
Correct. Yes, I know.
Wow.
It's pretty impressive.
We're top in the state.
All right, any questions on any of that? All right.
Thank you.
All right, our transportation department.
I looked at Liz, she gave the nod.
We don't usually sit in the back, but it was pretty crowded that we got here today. Good evening.
Good evening.
It is, it's time for purchasing of buses again. We did have a consultant to come help us a little bit. This is a little bit different type of year. We're gonna open the middle school up next year, and we knew that there was gonna be some things that we wanted to be sure of. We've got some trip buses that have to be entered into our fleet because we've got two middle schools and one high school. And then following year after that, we're gonna have another high school, so we're gonna have to add some more. But we, we went through our numbers, went through our enrollment, went through our routing and determined that we needed sixteen new buses for this year. Two of them are gonna be replacement buses, and one of them, Brady has been working on a grant.
So, the state, each year, they start a new grant program. It's been primarily electric until last year. They updated, transitioned it back to diesel. And so, this year, they're offering almost ninety-seven thousand if you receive the grant towards the purchase of a new bus. And so, that's, that's a large percentage. So, we have one bus that qualifies, it has to be a two thousand and five or older, and it has to be in service, it has to be registered. There's all these things that, that it has to meet the requirements. So, we have one that's that age that is still in use, and so we're hoping, I'm working with another transportation director. He's done a lot of grants, and he's, he's kinda giving me the ins and outs of how to get your grant in on the day, on day one. And, and it's first come, first served, and so we, I've already got all him the information that we need. And so, we're trying to be the first in line, if possible, to get that grant, so.
We've, we've also determined that it will help our, our staffing to get to fourteen passenger buses. These buses don't require a CDL to drive. So, while we have some of our drivers in training after they get hired, they could still be driving this for sped routes or even some smaller regular routes. So, so that's gonna help us a little bit, so altogether sixteen buses.
And they're good for, you know, smaller events, for golf. I know we, we always took those to state, you know, it's perfect for pole vault, tennis, those kind of things. They're, it'd be good for them to use too because you have that area in the back that's kind of storage. And then you can, you can hold more than a suburban will hold. So, instead of taking two Suburbans every time, you can take one of these. And so, it would be nice for those, those events also, the smaller events.
So, we're gonna use all of two thousand twenty-two bond for this. We, the remainder of that that we have to purchase the buses, and the price tag is two million five hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-two. So, it's a lot, but it's cheaper today than it will be six months.
And I was just looking at like the, the cost of a bus when I first got on the board to now is, inflation's like five percent a year over the last eight years, so, I mean, it's obviously...
It was a hundred and five probably seven years ago.
Yeah, and I was going off a hundred thousand dollars a bus, and so...
Crazy.
Yeah.
That's our information.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. You're not gonna make Greg do this one?
No, I'll go with this one. All right. Okay, so, this one is for purchases above a hundred thousand dollars. As y'all know, in our purchasing authority, it's up to a hundred thousand if budgeted. These are for our computer staff refreshes, it's for MacBooks and for IMAX. So, it's not all of our staff computers, as you can tell, but it is a cycle based on the year and the software, the processor that's on there. And so, Greg has looked at this and looked at what we have out there and what needs to be refreshed. This was part of his department's budgeting, so it's included in our annual budget. And it is estimated not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for those, a hundred and fifty-three MacBooks and IMAX. And I think y'all remember, many years ago, we went to the MacBooks for everybody, and that's consistent with what we're buying now. Any questions on that? All right, the next one's the same thing, at the purchase above a hundred thousand dollars. This one is for technology vehicles. If y'all remember, part of this past bond that passed in May was for some technology, infrastructure and technology department. That included three vans in that first, don't know if y'all remember, we had it sectioned out into each year and what was needed. So, in the first year, it was three technology vans. These are used to transport technology equipment throughout the district. We have one van right now, so they're using their personal vehicles transporting back and forth. And so, this would be three more onto that department, be part of the twenty-five bond, and it's not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand. Right now, we do have three selected, but, you know, holding a vehicle for sixty days sometimes isn't quite possible. That's why we've got the hundred and fifty, but right now, we've got them secured a little less than that. But that gives us a little flexibility if that vehicle happens to get sold before we bring it back the next month and get it approved. So, any questions on that? All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is good. So, these, can you make a little, thank you. These are the new course proposals, so I'm gonna like to go through each one because there's not very many this time. So, the very first one, robotics, this is a student-generated request. Our students are very interested and have been for a little while talking about robotics, so this is super exciting to have this. The second one, the digital art, this will be a great addition for this group of students, especially as we have the fancy media that's gonna be available in the stadium for them to be able to start working on that. We have the personal finance class, there's two of them there. There's the AP Business with Personal Finance and the Personal Finance, Financial Literacy. This is a requirement from the state that as they move away from economic classes and they add this in. So, that is something that we had to add there. The advertising is the level three for the marketing and sales pathway. So, it's another class in that pathway. And when a student's completed a pathway and taken IBC, then they earn their CCMR points. So, it's another opportunity for students who are interested in that to get their point that way. We have the AP Seminar and Research. So, this goes back to our collaborative visioning, and we had a lot of parents and staff members interested in kind of a capstone project for our student in class to accompany that. So, that is what the AP Seminar and Research are. So, this is something we haven't offered before, but another AP opportunity as well for our students that are looking for those points, but a super good opportunity for them to really work on those critical thinking skills with this capstone project class. Dance Wellness is that we added Dance Wellness One last year, so this is the second level. We've had a huge interest in it and students who want to continue with it. So, that is the Dance Wellness class.
Can I, can I ask about that?
Yes, sir. Which one?
Dance Wellness.
Uh-huh.
I mean, I could benefit from it, sure, certainly.
You're welcome to join them during your boardwalks, that'd be fun.
But it kinda goes back to kinda something I always, I mean, I always wanted to, wanna talk about when we talk about education. I mean, this, this is a, it seems like a neat course and teaches ballet, hip-hop, cultural dance, jazz, and it's all cool stuff. They're kinda hobbies and stuff, but, I mean, is that, you're saying there's a lot of interest in that, and this, and these kids are taking these as an elective?
So, they're required to have a fine arts, so they're getting a fine arts credit for it.
Fine arts credit?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it's, you know, like, how many different fine arts classes do we have, do you know?
I don't know right offhand, but once again, if, if we don't have enough student interest in it, then the class doesn't make and it's not offered. But what we're hearing right now from students who are in Dance Wellness One is that they'd like to continue on and they're enjoying that. So, it's a great way for our kids to be active, and a lot of our students who are juniors and seniors, they've taken most of the classes they need to graduate. They're still at school, though, so let's give them some great things to do and at least they're staying active.
Because the other options are usually choir-related or instrument-related. And so, this gives the other fine arts pathway of someone who's not necessarily going to sing or play an instrument.
I had a daughter take it last spring, and she loved it, she took the first one. And she said there were a lot of athletes in the class that took it just to work on flexibility and, you know, being light on their feet. She was like, it was probably one of the most popular classes, so, I don't know.
School's fun, too.
Yeah. I know, it's, it's just...
It's a high school recess.
It's just one of those things.
Flexible, or light on your feet.
Teach it if there's interest in it, but it does, it does make me kinda go like, hey, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm an English, math, science kid, and some of this stuff is so much filler, and I hear about this, oh, we need more, we need more. And I'm like, we're offering Dance Wellness One and Dance Wellness Two, and it seems like we're offering quite a bit.
From, for the elective side, for the elective side, yeah.
But the numbers, I think, would impress Mr. Westrom if we could share the numbers.
I'll be happy to share those numbers.
How many people are participating in middle school and high school?
Yeah, and you know, our electives, they kind of ebb and flow, and I think a lot of that is determined by the instructor in the class, right? And so, you have like somebody who's really dynamic in a class, and there's huge interest. And then maybe five years later, they've retired and somebody else comes, it's not as exciting, something else tends to go up. So, what's popular these few years may not be, maybe it wasn't popular five years ago and something else was. But I love the fact that we have electives that kids have fun in because school, we do a lot of learning, and I love that there's things that they just enjoy, that aren't stressful, that aren't AP Seminar, and AP Research, and AP Personal Finance, and then they can go to Dance Wellness and have fun, if that's what they enjoy.
I hear you. I'm sure my kids would be the first ones to sign up for it if they get anything.
I bet the girls would love it.
They're not gonna be in the AP class.
I will share those numbers with you. Any other questions?
I think it's also an opportunity for kids who, whose parents financially can't afford to do these basically required classes outside of, you know, doing drill team.
Incredible amount of time and money.
That's an opportunity, you know, that they can add these courses here as well, so.
For sure.
And it fits within our dance instructor's schedule anyway because they've got sections available, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think so. Yes, the dip, District Improvement Plan.
So, I brought the District Improvement Plan to you. This is actually the third or fourth time you may have seen it because we went through this whole plan during our collaborative visioning, then I brought it to you last month for information. So, nothing has changed since the other times you have seen it. What has happened in the meantime, though, is our campuses have had their campus improvement clan, uh, teams come together and create their plans based off this, and then we've created our goals as staff members of Argyle ISD based on this plan. And I can look at the plan for student learning and student experience in all of our areas and see that we're making some good progress already on those. So, it's exciting to see it, this is real stuff that we are actually doing. These are not just words, they are really incorporated to everything that we do. And you saw that just through the new courses, how we took what our collaborative visioning team brought to us and turned it into real life. You have any questions for me on the District Improvement Plan? Thank you.
Okay, that's action. All entertaining a motion to approve action eleven A is presented.
So moved.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Mrs. Leann Artho with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So, we, we brought to you last month some issues we have with hiring bus drivers and keeping bus drivers. We're still facing those challenges. It just seems like as soon as we get close to getting ahead, something happens and, and we, we lose a few drivers. I know that a lot of times this particular arena does go through, you know, the staff at times. There's, there's lots of reasons. But we, we do need some help hiring some drivers. We're, we're still five short right now currently. So, we, we've, we just feel like that, that this is gonna make a difference in getting some to come to us. We did talk about some ways to, to keep some drivers here after we've got them hired. We decided to kinda table that until the spring to where we could kinda get better, a better idea of what our budget looks like before we make any big decisions with that. We know that there's a need and for us to find something, but right now, it's, it's, it's more important to take care of our, our issue at getting drivers hired.
And Mr., I think we're, part of that conversation y'all had, you talked about how there's other, other groups of employees that we felt like we needed to look at from a bigger picture as far as a retention type.
We did, we, we talked about that, about moving forward, looking at that for some of our other hard-to-find positions.
Hourly employees.
And that this wouldn't, might not be just for bus drivers, but for other departments as well. And so, we wanted to have a bigger conversation, moving forward with that aspect of it. But we still felt there's a need right now. I mean, if you wanna just share how many drivers we are short right now and after today.
We were doing really good until today. We were doing really good.
We're back down to five down?
Yeah, we need five.
Yeah, so, you know, office staff and the transportation partner are still driving every day. You know, they have, they have long hours. We can't provide relief to that, we can't get them back to their eight-hour day until we fill these driving positions because students still have to get to and from school every day. And so, this is, the, the plan that they provided and brought to you is just a way to try and incentivize the drivers that are out there and to hire them in order to fill those positions, just so we can have a fully staffed department and provide relief to the ones that are having to work so much right now. Because if we wear out all of our employees, you know, they're gonna burn out at some point and say, we can't do this anymore, and that creates a bigger problem. So, it's just, it's a hard-to-find position, and it's not just with us, it's throughout the state and the nation. It's a very hard-to-fill position.
Sure.
And just, and it, it doesn't offer a lot of hours, you know, in most transportation examples, and it requires a lot of training, you know, getting a CDL is four to six weeks of, of training. You know, if they really get after it, and so, you know, if, if you're training a new one, you know, some, you know, I know historically, we haven't had it yet this year, that anybody that we've trained has, has stayed this year, but I know historically, you know, you may train somebody and you pay, pay to train them, but then they go somewhere else as soon as they're done training and make more money. So, you know, the, the two, the two things that this is addressing that I, that I consistently hear with people that I'm interviewing or I'm talking with on Indeed or reaching over that where they apply is, is the hourly rate and how many hours they're getting per day. And so, this is addressing both of those needs, and so...
And it is giving some drivers that are already there some incentive to go out and find and recruit for us.
And it is helping the drivers also. And it is helping the drivers also, period, that it's, you know, they're getting more money and more hours, so.
Guys, I'd be surprised if anybody's against this. I think we all understand the challenge we're faced with. And, you know, if we have money in the budget to allocate to solve the problem, this is a problem for the district, and I think we should allocate the money to it, so.
Thank you.
Easy.
Is, is there any opportunity, let's, let's say you train someone, you hire them, you train them to get their C E L, you've paid for the C E L and they leave immediately to use a fancy school, where is there any recapture on that training cost?
I believe we put that in at O'Braun.
Yes.
I think they would have to know about it and, and.
Right.
But yes.
But do we, do we do that?
We do not currently, I believe, do that.
Is that part of this plan?
It, it is not, but we have talked about a ninety-day period. If we've trained you and we've paid for your training, we've paid for your test, that you're going to have to reimburse us if you don't stay with it for ninety days. But we haven't, we haven't followed through with that.
Why not, why ninety days? Why not?
Why not longer?
The school year.
I've had it done.
I mean, all they can do is negotiate. Back with you, right?
Sure, that's true.
The, the one part of this plan that might come close to that is that the referral bonus, that current employees can get a referral bonus if the new driver actually gets trained and stays and drives for ninety days. That's the only thing that we have, then they get the, then they qualify for the referral. But not, we don't have it right now, coming back to the employee.
I think that's great, but I, I look at the ninety days as, all I got is to get to my ninety-day mark, and then I can, then I'm free.
You think it should be a year?
Yeah. If they say, hey, I'll do it, but I want that to be six months, well, guess what? You know they're about to leave in six months.
Right.
Tells you what you need to know, right?
It's what we do with a contracted employee. We write it in for specialized training, you know, we've had that done before, so.
Now I would align that with, I mean, whatever the best hiring period is for you guys. So if it's through the end of the school year in the spring, if they're hired, you know, in the fall, or they're hired in the spring, that it's, you know, a full calendar year.
At my business, we prorate it for twelve months, so, you know, i- if you leave at month ten, then you've got two months left.
Some, the summertime when they, when, when they're not working, it's, it's, it's an opportunity, so to say, for them to go look for other employment, which.
What you're going to find, too, is, you're going to find those other districts, they're going to tell them, hey, I can't leave because I owe them half my training back. Well, it's still cheaper for the other district to pay half the training? Give them a sign-on bonus to pay half the training because they didn't have to pay for all of it?
Yeah.
So you're getting into, you're getting into a world where you're going to have to have some pretty well-written agreements.
All right.
That make it painful to get out.
Yes.
Sorry to say that, but it is what it is, right?
Well, if we're going to train them, there needs to be.
So Dr. Daniel and his team can, from an H R perspective, come up with, with those contracts.
I definitely have seen it done for contracted employees, so I'm sure it can be done for at-will as well.
Are there any other questions on action item eleven B? We all entertain a motion to approve action item eleven B as presented.
I'm moved.
Mr. Hawxworth, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Best wishes.
Appreciate it.
Those are how it goes.
Yep.
Give an update.
I'll take that.
Write the contract well.
Okay, this is an action item for us to begin planning for the transition to two middle schools. This is a new position that would begin in, most likely in January. If the position is approved, we would post it tomorrow and begin interviewing in early November. This would be for the second middle school. And the budget impact for this school year, we're anticipating about a hundred and nine days, which is fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one. And then, of course, the next school year, this person would be full-time.
Any questions? The Honors Hand a motion to approve action item eleven C is presented.
So moved.
Dr. McDade, motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthew Slaton with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Dr. Jordan, the time is seven thirteen P M. We are adjourned.